Good afternoon. Thanks for tuning in. Thanks for, folks, being here. This is the Board of County Commissioners meeting for Tuesday, March 3, 2020. And by way of introduction, I'm John Hutchings. I'm the Chair of the Board. To my left is Commissioner Gary Edwards. Commissioner Mensah is out. And we have La Bonita Bomar, the Clerk of the Board. And sitting on the sidelines, but on the backbone of the Board as well, is our County Manager, Ramiro Chavez. To his right is Assistant County Manager, Robin Campbell. And to her right is Elizabeth Petrich, our Deputy Prosecuting Attorney. So with that, I'm going to ask Commissioner Edwards to please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
And I, in turn, am going to ask Commissioner Joe Downing from the Port of Olympia to lead us, please, sir.
Oh.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Joe. And welcome. All right. With that, I would like to entertain, I will entertain a motion to approve today's agenda. County Manager.
Let me see. Sorry. Is this on?
Sounds like it.
Can you hear me? No? Well, hopefully, the sound can be captured. For your consideration, Commissioners, I would like to introduce an amendment to the current agenda. Under the consent items, you have A through B. I'd recommend for you to consider removing item 3A out of today's agenda.
Is that a motion?
So, no.
No, you make the motion.
I would follow up and make that same motion of removing...
That was not, I was introducing amendment. I cannot make a motion.
I didn't think so. Okay.
I am making that motion.
Got it.
There you go. Okay.
And I second that.
Okay.
I second that motion to amend the agenda. Any further discussion on that?
No, sir.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That passes. Now I need a motion to approve the amended agenda, or the agenda as amended.
Yes, I would make that motion to approve the agenda today that was just amended.
I'll second that. So it's been moved and seconded to approve the amended agenda. Any discussion?
No, sir.
Discussion? Nope. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We have an agenda. And the Board meeting minutes from February 25, 2020.
Yes, I would move to approve the Board minutes from February 25, 2020.
Can I second that? Any corrections? Any changes?
No, sir.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. That takes us to presentations. And the first one is the State of the Timberland Regional Library address. Ramiro, do you want to frame this, sir?
Yes, I would love to introduce Ms. Cheryl Haywood. She is the Executive Director of the Timberline Regional Library.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Thank you for this opportunity. On behalf of the Timberland Regional Board of Trustees, who represent just over a half a million residents...
Cheryl, we just turned that, took that a little bit higher. There you go.
Is that better?
Perfect.
So on behalf of the Timberland Regional Library Board of Trustees, representing just over a half a million residents across five counties and 284 staff, thank you for the opportunity to present to you Timberland's 2019 State of the Library and several 2020 initiatives. Before I get started, I would like to introduce to you our Board President for 2020, Brenda Hershey, and she represents Mason County. Brenda Hershey. I'd also like for the library managers in Thurston County to stand up and introduce themselves in the library they work or represent. Go ahead.
Holly Paxton, manager of the Lacy Timberland Library.
Real loud. Loudly.
Erin Kamakale, beyond Timberland Library.
Morgan Sewell, Olympia Timberland Library.
Linda Taino, Timberland Library.
Yay, Taino.
Cole Thode, Tom Order.
Yay, five library managers. Five libraries in Thurston County. They're all here. Awesome. Awesome. So you have a full packet of information in front of you, and I'm going to go over a few of these initiatives from 2019. And the first is, of course, the annual report. And I encourage you to go to trl.org to look up a fabulous Adobe Spark presentation about all the photos that captures the joy and the happiness of all the programs that we put on last year.
A nice photo of you, too.
Thank you. Thank you. So let's make this presentation a little bit more back and forth, and please ask questions as we go along. So 2019 was a very important learning and planning year for Timberland Regional Library. We focused our efforts on listening to the needs of our communities and providing relevant library resources to the residents of our five counties: Mason, Lewis, Thurston, Grace Harbor, and Pacific Counties. These new library resources and programs that I will be sharing with you today tell bigger stories. Stories of connection, stories of hope, stories of how library staff and libraries have the power to change people's lives. From a young woman who applied for a job and got it at the McCleary Library using expanded access hours, to a Vietnam vet who recently began to receive needed benefits from a new pilot program at the Mountain View Library, from a senior remotely testifying to the Senate during this legislative session, to a teen participating in their first con, all of them deepen their understanding and connection to Timberland Library staff and to their Timberland Library. So, in 2019, Timberland began work on our 2020 to 2022 strategic direction. We began with a community engagement initiative that reached out across the five counties to gather data and feedback. We received over 1,500 responses to two surveys, met with residents at 13 locations for community conversations, and hosted five community check-ins, with the result that we have a one-page strategic direction for three years with a new mission, vision, and values, and that also outlined the three FOKI that we will be focusing on in the next three years. One is local communities, the other, the next one, is equity, diversity, and inclusion, and the third is children from birth to five. So when people asked us about, gave us their input, they wanted us to be sure that we still included on the bottom our core services. So you will notice the core services there. So please remember that with your free Timberland Regional Library card, you have access to 27 libraries, over 1 million physical items, more than 50 online databases, a slew of downloadable books, eBooks, and magazines, and programs, and more. So I encourage you to get your library card. I wanted to share with you specific input from people from Thurston County during this community initiative. There were distinct themes that emerged at the county level. And for Thurston County, it was people wanted more inclusive gathering spaces, people wanted communities to be safe, and people wanted a better way to share knowledge, planning, and resources across organizations. In terms of programs, last fall, I came to you and talked to you about the Summer Library Program, and I also came and talked to you about Timberland Reads together with Tommy Orange. There's a handout in your packet that goes over the highlights of how many people who participated, and so on. Third, in your packet, you have information about the Connection Sites. So last year, Timberland became part of the WorkSource system.
Yay.
This one here, yay. That's a big deal. That's a big deal. So if you're looking for work, looking for training, looking to hire trained staff, want to know more about work experiences and apprenticeships and more, you can turn to Timberland's 27 libraries, which became Connection Sites last summer. So by partnering with WorkSource, all community members in the five counties served by Timberland can also access WorkSource services. In addition to the six WorkSource offices, providing job seekers and employers direct referrals to career help such as job referrals, employment training for youth and adults, services for small business owners, and educational resources to level up your skills. Timberland Regional Library also has workforce development services at all of our 27 libraries, where you can access free internet and computer access, free Wi-Fi 6:00 a.m. to midnight seven days a week, free printing, 100 copies per week, and soon color printing at all of our libraries, free scanning and free faxing services, free career and business database-related resources, and free resume uncoverer letter help. There is so much more to talk about on this topic that I would love to come back and talk to you more about Timberland's Connection Services. So the fourth handout in your packet is on the flip side of the WorkSource one, and that's expanded access at the McCleary Timberland Library. This was a pilot put on last year where we went from four days a week and 27 staffed hours to 91 hours a week, 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., seven days a week, for people 18 years and older, to be able to get into the library when there were no staff there to access the computer, check out a book, read a newspaper, whatever. So on this flyer, you can read the testimonials of people who live in the area who have taken advantage of this service. Now, I say people in the area. You, if you have a Timberland Regional Library card, you can go to the McCleary Timberland Library and get a key to get in, not a key, but looks like this, to get into, to get into the library. So I encourage you to read the success stories there. On your next handout, you have the Veterans Connection Cafe. And this started as a pilot at the Mountain View Timberland Library. This program offers professional teleservices to rural veterans who can receive virtual assistance with benefits. And, and they get an hour-long appointment booked with the local host navigator that works directly with the veteran and remote veteran service officer to answer questions and assist with filing claims. And so we partnered with the West Care Foundation, with Home Depot, with Lacy Veteran Service Hub, and American Legion Lacy Post 94 to create this partnership. So I wanted to share one quick story. This is a story about John, who lives in the Randall area. He's a Vietnam vet. He gave us permission to share his story. With this program, he received free hearing aids and new glasses. He was officially diagnosed with PTSD and depression and is getting free psychiatric care. He's been awarded an initial 50% disability rating, and he received back pay of the 50% disability data from when he first applied for benefits in 2018. John is thankful for this program at the Mountain View Timberland Library, and he wants other vets who were turned away by the VA after Vietnam to come and get help. So we're so excited about this, and it's going so well, that we are working with West Care right now on identifying other libraries where we can offer this service. So what's new in materials? We added some new materials last year. One of them is called Canopy and Canopy for Kids. And it was introduced as our new streaming movie service, where patrons could stream up to five films per month for free with no wait times. You have access to over 30,000 classic indie and foreign films and documentaries available with your library card, and they all have public performance rights. So if you're working with a group, you can show them without having to pay for the public performance rights. We also added what's called Lucky Day Collections, where we expanded from bestsellers, so you don't have to wait too long, to include feature films. So this means that you can walk into any library at any time, and it's your lucky day to pick up a high-demand feature film. There's no waiting, there's no holds, there's no renewals, it's first come, first served. And then we also, in this packet, gave you information about aids for better living. So we work with the, we partner with the Washington Assistive Technology Act program to make a collection of assistive technology devices available to our residents. We updated the collection, and it includes daily living aids that help with kitchen tasks like eating and dressing and mobility, communications assistance aids, computer access devices, and so on and so forth. Also in 2019, going into 2020, the Olympia Timberland Library had a refresh, so I invite you to go down to the library to check it out. Morgan worked with her staff for more than two, three years on the project, and it looks awesome. So I invite you to go down. I do want to thank the City of Olympia, as well as ourselves, because we had an ample gift fund for the Olympia Library, so we were able to use about a quarter of a million dollars of that gift fund to refresh the library. So now, for 2020 initiatives, you may have heard that as of January 1, Timberland Libraries are now fine, free. Woo-hoo, just like the inner-city transit, right? Because we recognize that it was a barrier. So just wanted to let you know about that.
I'm sleeping better now.
That's great.
We've talked about that.
As we have talked about that, yes. Also in your packet, we have, I have information about the Senate Remote Testimonial Sites. So the Senate IT Department reached out to us, and they said that they wanted representation in southwest Washington for people to be able to remotely testify to the Senate. And so we did a test of the technology part at the Mountain View Timberland Library. We have eight libraries that are involved in this pilot. We're very excited that we were selected, and I wanted to share with you a quote by a woman who lives there who was able to provide testimony. "So remote testimony at our local library was a wonderful way to allow all our citizen voices to be heard on things that affects our daily lives, particularly in remote and sometimes forgotten communities like ours." So the libraries involved are Aberdeen, Amanda Park, Belfair, which is North Mason, Hoquiem, El Waco, Mountain View, Ocean Park, and Packwood are participating during this session. We will be probably adding future libraries into this, probably as we move forward into the 2021 session. Lastly, I wanted to talk to you about the importance of the 2020 census, and you have a handout about that as well. And so we are committed to helping our communities achieve a complete count, because libraries serve everyone, and we believe that everyone counts. And as you know, almost 30% of the state's operating budget is based on the census count for programs such as Head Start and School Lunch programs. Timberland Regional Library receives federal funding as well through programs such as Lynda.com that you have access to 24/7 with your library card and E-Rate telecommunications. We get 70% of a rebate on all of our computer, computer system. And so for us, that equals about $300,000 a year. We received a grant from the Office of Financial Management for about $79,000 to help us with the census. We encourage people to go to the library if you don't have computer access, so that you can make your voice heard and be counted. So from March 12 until the end of April, all 27 libraries will have dedicated computers for people to do that. I want to talk very briefly about our finances. While we always make every effort to live within our means and be good stewards of public funds, our expenditures have been outpacing our revenues since 2001 with the Initiative 747, placing limitations on property tax increases. The gap has increased annually as costs go up, with the largest impacts coming from salaries and benefits. To continue to bridge the gap of expenditures outpacing revenues, we implemented a soft hiring freeze in January 2019 and took a close look at each position as it opened through attrition. Through 2019, we were able to save approximately $700,000, and thanks to this fiscally responsible decision-making process. We invited everyone to follow along with our 2020 budget discussions that took place at our Board of Trustee meetings, and have all stages of the budget document posted on our website at trl.org. We continue to work with a concentration on current needs, as well as looking 10 years down the line. Our focus is on continued fiscal responsibility and increase in accessibility with ongoing efforts to establish a sustainable staffing model. So all the work accomplished in 2019 and in early 2020 is to prepare Timberland as we move into our strategic direction, with our new vision of our libraries connecting to our communities, where we value access for all, working together, diverse communities and ideas, and responsible use of public resources. Our staff and our libraries are on the way to connecting more deeply with our communities and our residents, as R. David Langs wrote, "Bad libraries only build collections; good libraries build services; great libraries build communities." Thank you, Thurston County residents, for an outstanding year, helping to continue to build our communities. Please share what you have learned today with your families, friends, and colleagues. Please raise the number of library cardholders in Thurston County. I encourage you to do that. To learn more, go to trl.org. On behalf of Timberland Regional Library and all of our communities, I'm really proud of all of us and what we have accomplished in 2019 and into the first part of 2020. Thank you.
Wow.
Thank you.
Go ahead, pleasure.
Any questions?
No, I just want to thank you so much for your enthusiasm. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
And Cheryl, I see that you had an event last evening at Olympia Timberland, and it was the Introduction to Census.
Yes.
Any idea what kind of turnout you had?
Do you know?
We had six.
Six people. It's to train people, to make them understand why it's so important and to take it. And the person who's giving these programs is one of our own staff, who is actually overseeing the whole initiative for the census, for 2020 census. We have staff in every county who is part of a census group. And we are also, what I didn't say too much about this afternoon, is we are also going out with hotspots and helping people get counted in the more remote areas. And we're working with the federal census staff. They're identifying tracks in our five-county region where the count wasn't accurate 10 years ago, and so we're, you know, we're focusing in on a couple of tracks in west Grace Harbor County and also in Lewis County. But again, all counties we're working on.
And I'll just add, the Veterans Connection Cafe is awesome.
It is awesome.
So thank you very much for all the work you're doing and the guidance and direction of the Board.
Yes. Thank you very much.
Very much.
And thank you very much for a wonderful trustee. We really appreciate having Kathy Varney as our new trustee for Thurston County.
Yay.
Thank you very much.
I wanted to hear her name. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
And next is a proclamation for Women's History Month. Ramiro, or do you want to...
Yeah, thank you, Commissioners. I would like to introduce our own County Auditor, Mary Hall, and she's here to help us. Also, Ms. Sandra Herden, and she's with the League of Women Voters. I think it's a good representation related to this proclamation. Please come in.
Go on up and say something nice and important.
Well, 2020 is a big year for women, as far as voting goes. This year is our 100th anniversary of the suffrage movement, so this year, it's been 100 years that all women across the country have been able to vote. Washington, of course, was a little ahead of the curve and did it 10 years ago, but I think it's a great year to celebrate women, and again, it's a presidential year. So, and I appreciate my relationship with the League of Women Voters, who have been amazing to work with this year.
Yes, thank you. Thank you very much for noticing this and calling attention to this event. Not only do I obviously support what Mary said, the League of Women Voters was established in 1920 as well. And the goals of the League of Women Voters are voter education, that includes information about candidates and the right to vote. We're nonpartisan. We don't support parties or candidates. We also do advocate on the basis of issues that we study, and they're not related to partisanship. So the League of Women Voters has been very involved in the process of getting the right to vote from the beginning. I should add that while the 19th Amendment did provide suffrage for women as a category, which did include African-American women, although their vote was suppressed for many years and continues to be suppressed in cases, but other women were not, all other women were not included. Native American women were not granted the right to vote in 1920, nor were Asian women, and those happened later by laws that were passed subsequent to that time. So it's helpful sometimes to parse the differences. The category of women, although we're half of the population of the world, perhaps more than half, isn't always included when we talk about women's suffrage. And so it's very important to recognize that. Women's history as a category of study has been in our educational institutions for a long time, and it includes the information that we're referring to, extremely important. As a retired college professor, I'm extremely aware of that. I taught in a women's studies program at one point, and it's very important that we recognize women's history, because it was not considered, it wasn't visible for so long. It may sound silly that we talk about women's history, but in fact, that was suppressed and invisible for a long time, and that's why it's important to call attention to it. So thank you very much, and I'll get off my soapbox, and thank you so much for doing this proclamation.
You're welcome. Do you have any comments or questions?
Thank you for coming and attending today, because it is very important.
I appreciate your work.
And it was a great event at the Big Little House. It was a great event.
It was a splendid event.
It was, you weren't expecting it, but the place was packed.
It was packed. We had nearly 100 people in that tiny little place. It was grand.
And dressed in period clothing. It was just really a lot of fun. Anyway, is there a proclamation then, sir?
Yes, sir, there is. Women's History Month. Valiant women of the vote. Whereas women of every race, place, class, and ethnic background have made and continue to make historic contributions... and artistic achievements, our social advancement, and in all areas of accomplishment. And whereas American women are particularly important in the establishment of early charitable educational and cultural institutions in our nation. And whereas American women served as early leaders in the forefront of every major progressive social change movement, including the right to vote, improved employment rights, the civil rights movement, and the peace movement, which creates a more just society for all. And whereas the League of Women Voters was formed in 1920 to promote a larger role for women in public affairs after winning the right to vote, and whereas American women are increasingly represented as public officials in all levels of government and serve our country courageously in the military. And whereas Women's History Month, derived from International Women's Day, commemorating working women in the early 20th century, has been designated in our nation and each year since 1987. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the Board of County Commissioners hereby complain, proclaim March 20th as Women's History Month in Thurston County and encourage all residents to honor women for their countless contributions to our community and nation, and to learn more about the significant role of women in the creation of our history. And I dare not complain, my wife and I have been married 50 years. I certainly would not complain.
That will come up for a photo. All right. That takes us to the point of the agenda for the, for public comment, the opportunity for the public to address the board. And there's a sign-up sheet in the back. If you haven't signed up, you'll get an opportunity at the end of public comment to still make comment. Some guidelines for public comment. Please introduce yourself when you come up to the podium, including the address where you reside in the county. Please address the board and not the audience. Please silence your cell phones if you haven't already. And this is a time for the public to address the board. It's not for us to engage in question and answer or discussion. So, don't think we're being rude. We just don't do that at public comment. Speakers are limited to a total of three minutes, and there's a timer up here. And la bonita, Bomar, the clerk of the board has the timer, and if it ticks down to zero, you'll hear a chime, and that means your time is up. Meeting attendees cannot donate their speaking time to another person. The board reserves the right to restrict a person's opportunity to address the meeting for a good cause. Please, we ask, no comments that are lewd, inoffensive, inflammatory, hateful, defamatory, or discriminatory in nature. We ask you, please be respectful. No outbursts of any kind, no comments that are commercial in nature, such as a promotion for a for-profit business. All materials provided to the county may be considered public records, subject to public release upon request pursuant to the Public Records Act, Chapter 42.56 of the RCW. And remarks about pending land use permits or similar matters that could eventually come before this board on appeal are not appropriate either. So, I thank you in advance for your cooperation. I will call the folks up one at a time, but I will give the, in order, I'll give the name of the person due up and then the next runner up, so you're prepared to go. And so, the first one is Tony Hammett, followed by Mary Abramson.
Hi, my name is Tony Hammett, and I'm a regional manager for Lakeside Industries. I've worked for Lakeside for 23 years, and I'm here to ask you to keep our Comprehensive Plan Amendment for, on the 2020 docket. The county's been working on this amendment at Lakeside's expense since 2017, and it's almost ready for a vote. The use of recycled asphalt is a standard practice. Lakeside paves roads in Thurston County and provides family wage union jobs. The ability to recycle will allow Lakeside to remain competitive, which would help protect these jobs. It could also extend Thurston County taxpayer dollars for road construction. That's all I have. I just want to thank you for the opportunity to comment on Lakeside's Comprehensive Plan Amendment.
Thank you, sir. Mary Abramson, followed by Eric Casino.
Yes, 7833 Beryl Court in Olympia. As you can see, I'm dressed up as the spirit of '76 because I decided I would start with a Thomas Jefferson quote, so I thought I'd dress up like Thomas Jefferson. This is the quote, "If the American people ever allow private banks to control the issue of their currency first by inflation then by deflation, the banks and corporations, the banks and corporations that grow up around them will deprive the people of all property until their children wake up homeless on the continent their father conquered." He later says, "I believe that banking institutions are more dangerous to our liberties than standing armies." This is the situation we have right now. We have a banking cartel that is in control of the world for hundreds of years, and they own most of the stock on the large global corporations, including the telecom corporations. You may not be aware, but the telecom corporations are the greatest lobby and payer of politicians, more so than the pharmaceuticals now. What we're having this year and next year is a rollout of 5G technology. We're told that this is going to make our life better. We're going to be able to talk to our coffee maker before we get home, et cetera, et cetera. In reality, what this group is doing is they're putting in place a weaponized surveillance system. This is going worldwide. Martin Paul, Ph.D., Professor of Biochemistry and Medical Sciences of Washington State, said this on national TV, "Putting in tens of millions of 5G antenna without a single biological test of safety has to be about the stupidest idea anyone has had in the history of the world." There is not one single scientific study that says this is safe. The FCC is rolling it out without a single safe study. In contrast, worldwide, there are thousands. There was a compilation of 23,000 studies that show that this harms birds, bees, microbes, and the human body. So, we're looking at 250 antennas per mile. That's one a block. 5G is like smart meters, only 10 times stronger, and we already have people that have illnesses on smart meters. There's a way to stop it. It's called the NOL. And Thursday in Yelm, I will be hosting a film that they're showing how to stop this. You know, we have a wonderful world, but we have a controlling group at the top that I think is going to take us out. So, please watch the film, 5G Apocalypse, and come Thursday night to Yelm Community Center, 7 o'clock. Thank you.
Thank you. Eric Casino, followed by Shelley Dilworth.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name's Eric Casino. I live in unincorporated Thurston County on the western shores of Long Lake. And I'm here today, actually, to hand out some kudos and give thanks. I was born and raised here in Thurston County, and most of that time was spent down in the Niskuale Valley. I own a couple of places down there. And not to date myself too much, but I went through the flood of '77 and of '96, and I still own some places down there that, I don't rent them anymore. I let wayward friends and family that don't know what's going on stay there. And this last flood was kind of a, it was another devastating effect. Now, I don't know if it was as bad as '77 or '96, but the county's response, which is probably really hard to judge on how much effort you put into it, has been great. Public Works has been down there quite a bit. We had a lot of cleanup efforts that were coordinated by the county, and things, it seemed a whole lot easier this time than it did in '96 or in '77. So, I think you guys did a really good job, and I'm grateful for it, and I appreciate you even pay attention to some of the things that happened down in that part of the world. Thank you much.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Shelley Dilworth, followed by Tyler Danielson.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm back again. And I'm here, and I love to see, I know I'm not supposed to address them, but I love to see that we have some positive feedback coming in because that's always awesome. We do have some changes that have been made, from what I understand from my past visits, and those are awesome changes as well. However, we're not there yet. We still need to make some more changes in order for this to run smoothly. We still have changes within our planning department that need to be made, and they need to be made now. We have upper management staff quoting codes that are not correct. We have senior staff quoting codes that are not correct and having to be corrected by citizens. What are their jobs for? Why are they in those positions? If I quote my job wrong, I am corrected. If you quote your job wrong, I'm going to come in here, as I am today, and tell you that's wrong. So, why are we not doing that to our planning department? Why are we not reeducating them and following through on all of these things that people are complaining about because they're repeat complaints? They're not one and two people. I have a list. They're not one and two people with the same complaint. There are several people with the same complaints on the same staff that work here. I voiced these complaints, and it took over two years for anything to be done on the one thing that was happening on our property. Over two years. That's ridiculous. You have people out there that are looking to you as our leaders to make these changes. Let's make them, and let's make them together. Start listening to the community. Start listening to the people that live out there and deal with your staff that come out there and treat us in these manners. Your staff that do not understand their codes that they are quoting, citing us on, fining us on, making us follow rules that don't apply to us. Start there. Let's start reeducating. Let's start making sure that the people that are supposed to make us follow the codes in our county are actually knowing what they're supposed to be pushing forward and making us follow. But when you have senior management that does not understand what their job is and their codes, and they're following along instead of doing the research themselves, that's a problem. We need to make change, and that's where it has to start, in senior management. If they can't get on board and make those changes, they need to go. It needs to happen, and it needs to happen now. Thank you for your time today, and I will continue to come and visit with you because I love visiting with you anyways. Thanks.
Thank you, Shelley. We're not engaging the public, but do you have specifics you can give to staff to follow up on?
I do.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Tyler, there you go.
Hi.
Hi. If you just start, you'll get extra time.
My name is Tyler Danielson, and I'm also with Lakeside Industries. The public comment period is open on the 2020 docket, so that's what I'm here to talk about today. I'm asking that you keep Lakeside's amendment for, to the Comprehensive Plan on the 2020 docket for specifically four reasons. First, the amendment is asking for recycle of asphalt in the Niskuale subarea. Asphalt recycling is a sustainable practice that avoids waste and reduces the total amount of aggregate consumption in our county and in the country. This amendment would preserve those resources for future generations. Second, Lakeside's amendment is moving forward at Lakeside's expense. County staff time on the amendment is paid for by Lakeside Industries under a contract that ends December 2020. The contract end date was actually recently extended to December 2020 with the expectation that the amendment would be voted on this year. Third, in consideration of Lakeside, consideration of Lakeside's amendment has been ongoing for already two years, so it's nearing its completion. And finally, if approved, this amendment could extend county funds on road construction. In addition to our previous comments, I've submitted a letter dated February 28th. I hope that you'll read it, and it'll provide more details of why we hope that you'll continue our amendment on the docket. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. That exhausts the list of people that have signed up. Is there an additional list in the back? I'll get to you in a minute. Okay. So, if there's anybody that has not had a chance, that didn't sign up but would like to address the board, you're welcome to come up now. Come on up. Brianne. Willard, is it?
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name's Brianne Willard, 114256 Avenue, Southeast, down in the Niskuale Valley. So, today marks the 27th day being forced out of my home from the flood that Tacoma Power released upon us and the damaging effects from that. Last week, I spoke about the regulatory authority from their own website and the liability that they have. Now, one thing that is not talked about, bring up, and this one is a common practice upon dam failures, what their defense turns to is an act of God. So, an act of God, the requirements for an act of God would be an unforeseenable, reasonable human intelligence in the absence of human agency causing the alleged damage. Thus, if a similar storm had occurred before, could be anticipated using modern techniques that were otherwise reasonable, foreseeable, even if not probable, claiming an act of God will not be successful to serve as a defense. So, it seems like back in '77 or '75, and then '96, there was some different measures that were put in place to prevent this. The last time I checked in the last year that I was living there, there hasn't been a storm of the century to say, to happen that would cause them to release the waters at over 27,000 cubic feet per second at one time. So, that's, we didn't have that storm. If we had an earthquake, that would have been an act of God. We didn't have that. We just had a large amount of rainfall, which is pretty cool because it talks about this in here. Well, although rainfall may be more than ordinary, which we did have a lot of rainfall in the, was it month of January to February? We had quite a bit. But even if it was unforeseen, the party engaged in the public work of the dam and with this, with this rain of the flow of the water, the guilty negligence, if it fails to make reasonable provisions for the consequence that would result in extraordinary rainfalls, as experience shows, are likely to reoccur. So, we are in a heavy rainfall area, and it's pretty reasonable to think that, you know, if we're getting a lot more rain, we should let out more water to the dam to prevent to the point where there is a dam failure causing catastrophic damage. And there's plenty of case law. a dam failure causing catastrophic damage. And there's plenty of case law talks about state ball.
Go ahead and finish up your thought. You're fine. You're fine.
Okay. That, that is one of the things that they tried, that they pulled out in 1996, was the, was the act of God, and they were ruled in favor. Although there's been multiple measures put in place, yet we're still having this again. When's it going to be the next time? Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Brianne. That's good information. John, are you going to speak? Okay.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm John Pettit. I live out on Rich Road. And my road has some beautiful blacktop that was actually created with Lakeside Industries. I'm bringing this up because the docket is coming up. Now, I realize there seems to be controversial that business should exist in Thurston County. And we seem to have a problem thinking that all the time, business is the negative. Business is what puts food on our tables. Business is what creates the products that we drive on every day. And recycling? How can anyone oppose the concept of recycling? Because recycling is the environmental answer for, for making a better world. And it isn't like as though they're draining oils down into the water. They're all in a contained environment. I strongly suggest, as you're going to consider a docket, one, is that you consider the economic impact of all these businesses, and what the value is and our needs are for business. You know, yes, we have a lot of government here, but we can't depend upon the idea that we can have a spot just bringing revenue into the state and then spending it all on salaries. We need businesses here to support. And we happen to have to recognize, it's important, businesses like Lakeside has a history of providing wonderful service to our community. Now, one of the things I heard a little earlier, because this docket information is coming up, is, of course, they're bringing in all these comments, and then they're going to, they're going to categorize them, and they're going to file them all accordingly, and then they'll let you know what it is that the public's comments are. I'm going to tell you, in my past experience of seeing how certain departments have made matrixes to tell you what someone says, I think you need to hear it from those people. You need to remember that as property owners, we have rights to use our property. The concept of planning is to help to protect the overall environment and people, but we have a primary right to be able to use our property. It's a republic. It isn't owned by everybody else. It's owned by us. And many of us, we pay a lot of taxes, and the county's entering to a spot that they even want more money from us. We can't survive if we're constantly told no, and how we have to operate. Hate to say this, government has never been good at running business. Business people run business. And so I'm going to suggest to you, get a look at all the comments directly, relate it to the ones that own the property as being the most significant. And it should go forward on all of these dockets like Lakeside, so long as it's going to help our economy and still be reasonable without major catastrophe. Thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like to address the board that has not signed up? Anyone? Anyone? All right. Thank you. Now, move on to agenda item number two, and that is the county manager's update.
Yeah. Thank you, Commissioners. I'd like to follow up on a couple, a couple of items. First of all, last week, I reported related to Nisqually flooding. They were working with FEMA in the assistance, assistance programs. One is the public assistance, and the other is the individual assistance. I'd like to report related to the public assistance. FEMA and the state teams validated the infrastructure damage in Thurston County for the following agencies. That will be Thurston County, Lacey Fire District Number Three, and City of Olympia for a total cost of $2,637,000. Also, related to the individual assistance, FEMA State, and the state has damaged assistance teams work with individual assistance, small businesses, administration, in working with those claims of the individual assistance, and they will be in the process of validating the damages hopefully this week. Also, last week, you received some public testimony. As a result of that, we've received some information that perhaps some wells, the test resulted on having an E. coli presence. So we responded by delivering bottled water to those individuals affected by those wells. So thank you for the food bank to provide those bottled waters. And also, we made environmental health staff available to those residents, just to see how they can probably deal with the contaminated wells. Also, you received public testimony. There was a need of additional dumpsters being placed in the area, because the, some of those individuals affected still have debris removal needs. So thank you for the public services, where they placed two dumpsters over the week, over the weekend. And we were able to serve 10 individuals. They used those dumpsters over the weekend. Also, an update on the community meeting. We started identifying some specific dates. And emergency services staff is coordinating with county agencies that includes the Red Cross, United Way, and the food bank, as well as the county staff. And I believe Commissioner Edwards is going to be attending the committee meeting. And the date and time will be identified hopefully by next week. That's all I have on that item. Also, I'd like to inform the board, the Thurston County has been awarded for the 13 straight year, the annual certificate of achievement, of achievement of excellence in financial reporting, also known, also known as a scarf. The Government of Financial Officers Association, GFOA, gives the award to recognize the state and local governments who go above and beyond of their financial reporting. The auditor's office and the financial services staff, which some are here, have been instrumental in getting this achievement, this award, and this certificate being in place. But also, as you heard from your assistant county manager there this morning, it's also required, requires a village. And all the financial staff across the county also has played a pivotal point in getting, again, this certificate being in place. And again, that is an achievement for 13 years consecutively, for us to receive this achievement. So I would like to have financial staff stand and be recognized for their great achievement.
I recognize you. Well, 13 years is a considerable amount of time. Go ahead. Did you have something? Go ahead.
But if you want to say something, can you?
I always come up to the mic. It'll be easier for the folks at home to hear. I'm thinking these, these microphones.
Put you on the spot here.
My name's Cory. I work for Financial Services. And this is Juliette Carruth. She also works for Financial Services. And I just want to reiterate what Ramiro said. This took the whole team of fiscal staff in the county, from the accounting assistants on up, you know, we, we report the information that starts, you know, at ground level. So I'd like to recognize everybody in the county as well.
Yeah. We really need to thank Robin for her support and the fiscal people that are contributing so much. And also for Darren Bennett, Financial Services Manager, and Ron Haney, who's the one who keeps it all going, and his spreadsheets are epic. So.
Legendary.
Legendary, definitely.
Yes.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And I'd like to add, I mean, it's, it's just a genuine person that gives credit to everybody else, too. So thank you for mentioning all those names. And Darren Bennett is, he's phenomenal. He's a good egg. So congratulations. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. And lastly, our own Economic Development Manager, Jenica Machado, applied for a certification related to the green business. And this application has been received, and the county has been approved and awarded Green Business Certificate for transportation and the commute trip reduction, on the waste reduction for recycling, and the social performance indicators. And again, Jenica has made a great effort to make sure that we highlight all the activities that we do related to green business. So the county will be recognized of this certificate on the upcoming Thurston County Chambers Luncheon, the Hotel RL, on Wednesday, April 8, 2020. So the Thurston County Green Certificate is a partnership between the cities of Lacey, Olympia, Tomwater, and Thurston County Chambers, and is sponsored by the Port of Olympia, Intercity Transit, and Puget Sound Energy. The Thurston Green Business Designation Program has a mission of connecting and celebrating sustainable businesses practices in organizations in Thurston County, and enhancing the overall environmental and economic health of our community. So, kudos to Jenica, and kudos to the county as well.
Quick work, because Jenica just started, Jenica just started in January. That's good work for her. That's it, sir?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. That takes us to agenda item number three, and that is the consent item. And that is the auditor's financial services. Is there a motion to approve the consent item?
Yes, we've got quite a lengthy consent item coming up here. A has been removed, and so we're just going to go with consent item B. And I would make a motion that we approve the voucher list.
I second that motion. Any discussion on the vouchers themselves?
No, sir.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Agenda item number four, Public Works Resolution and Call for Sealed Bids for Thurston County Public Works. Welcome again.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Marcus Torvik, Associate Civil Engineer with Public Works. Public Works is requesting permission from the Board of County Commissioners to call for sealed bids for a contract to repair and replace timber pilings, crossbeams, and crossmembers at the Deschutes River Trestle, where the Yelm-Tonino Trail crosses the Deschutes River. The engineer's estimate for this project is $375,000, and will be funded from REIT II funds that have been set aside for the Parks and Trails program. The trestle is part of the 14 and a half mile Yelm-Tonino Trail that runs east-west through the southern portion of Thurston County, connecting the communities of Yelm, Rainier, and Tonino. The trail intersects, intersects with the 22-mile Chehalis Western Trail, linking those communities to the cities of Tomwater, Lacey, and Olympia, ending at Woodard Bay on the Puget Sound. This project will ensure the continued use of the Yelm-Tonino Trail by the traveling public. Possible closure of the trail in the near, near future would be a result of postponing these repairs. This project is in the current 2020 Public Works budget, 2020 through 2025 Parks and Open Space Capital Facilities Plan, and is in alignment with the county's strategic plan and initiative aid to support robust and well-maintained infrastructure systems for a thriving community.
Where's your pictures?
I left them at the office this morning.
Ah, they're great pictures. Were you here for that? Okay, were you, Gary?
Yeah, I saw pictures earlier.
They were great. Anyway.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments?
Well, I can only say it looks like it's going to take more than a railroad car bridge to fix this, so.
All right. And I have nothing for today, other than this morning and last week. So is our motion.
Yes, sir. I would move to approve the resolution call for sealed bids and authorize the county engineer to set the bid date in time for receipt and opening of said bids for the repair and replacement of rotten timber piling, and I believe that's over 100 years old, and crossbeams, crossmembers for the Thurston County Public Works, Deschutes River Trestle Substructure Project, CRP number 51092.
And I second that motion. So it's been moved and seconded to call for sealed bids. Any discussion on it?
No, sir.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
And that takes us to the county managers. What, it says county manager. That always throws me off still. This is a time for the Commissioners to report in on stuff we've done over the last week. Commissioner?
Well, I guess, I'm just going to say that we're still very tied up with the flood process, water quality. And I want to take a moment to recognize Mr. Willard for bringing forward this information, having to do with the flood and with Tacoma Power. I would just like to read one thing that he brought forward to me, and this is out of the Regulatory Authority, the Federal Power Act Code of Federal Regulations. I'm just going to, a sub-piece of this information, is Lacey shall be liable for all damages occasioned to the property of others by the construction, maintenance, or operation of the project works. And I think what this actually means in conjunction, that was pointed out here by Mr. Willard earlier today, is I believe that Tacoma Power has a responsibility for the damage incurred by the flooding that took place recently on the Nisqually River, damaging a lot of property. And we, thankfully, we had no deaths associated or injuries with this. But I do feel it would benefit the citizens of Thurston County if the county would become involved in the litigation on this particular issue. And I see this very comparable to the litigation we got involved in over the tobacco industry and the damage that was doing to the public, the opioid industry and the damage that was doing to the public. So I think there's certain times when the public as individuals does not have the ability to bring a claim, and I believe that the county should be able to move forward on this. And I'm looking forward to response through the county manager on how we can proceed on that. Thank you.
Thank you. I've been working, I'll start with the last thing, because you just brought that up. And there's the, I've worked with Chris Wells, who I've been in conversation with her times. She's the Director of United Way, and in efforts to keep the Nisqually flood victims on the radar. Because even though we've moved on, as a country, as a county, beyond, and now we're on to COVID-19, that's the topic du jour right now, and I don't mean to minimize it, but now the flood victims are forgotten because the water's gone, and okay, let's move on. But there's folks who are still recovering and recouping, and they're still traumatized, traumatized and dealing with the trauma, dealing with loss of income, dealing with damaged property that's not livable and such. And we want to keep those poor folks on the radar, because they're still in need of services. So whether it be Robert Coit at the Food Bank, or United Way's help, please, they're looking for donations. And I'm not making, well, I am making a plea. Please help. They, they need some help to help these folks from the flood. Also, to keep COVID-19 on our radar, not to keep it on our radar, but to keep the public informed, we're having kind of started today a weekly update on what's going on throughout Thurston County. And in my, my thinking is to keep the public informed, so the public can be prepared and not paranoid. And with an absence of information, we fill in the worst-case scenario, and that's generally not the good way to go. So we want to know, I want the public to know that we have plans. Our Health Department, and Shelley Slaughter, the director, is working with, with a health officer that we're getting on board quickly as well, and that's happening, I believe, next week perhaps, and with the Department, the State Department of Health. And the governor's declared an emergency, that we have plans for whatever kind of effect that, and impact that'll have on our community here. So those started this morning. And I attended the Olympia West Lions Club meeting last week, and gave kind of a state-of-the-county address, testified before a Senate bill, for Senate Bill 5522, before their committee regarding the ability of, for annexation in unincorporated areas, and attended the Economic Development Council meeting, and met with Brad Thompson from U.S. Fish and Wildlife, and more on that is coming up in the next few weeks. And met with Pete Komet over a mutual interest issue in the, in the city of Tonino, or Tomwater. And as mentioned, we had dinner, Eric Casino mentioned this, I don't know if you mentioned the dinner or not, but we had dinner last Friday night with the Planning Commission, and it was one of the best ones I've ever attended. It was really a very meaningful It was really a very meaningful meaty event, no pun intended. Of course, I had ravioli, vegetarian. Attended the Legislative Steering Committee webinar, attended the Together Gala fundraiser this last Saturday night at St. Martin's, and spent my lunch today down at Hartstrides Therapeutic Horsemanship. And Kristi Dees runs that program, and she works with our troubled youth, and at-risk youth, and she also is working with veterans. And so I went down and had an opportunity to meet one of her students that she's had for a couple of years now. He's a disabled combat veteran, and to see him saddle up the horse and work with the horses was very, very eye-opening, and very, very cool, because he's been working with this horse for two years, they've become, it's not his horse, but he's become very close, very bonded with the horse. And I asked him, do you feel any change, or what, what do you feel when you look into that horse as the big eye? And he just, he kind of explained it in a way that I won't, I won't do justice, but it was exceedingly touching. And so it's a program that I fully support. Kristi Dees is an amazing horsewoman, horse trainer, and Trump and you are in, she runs a nonprofit. So I just wanted to give a shout out to Hartstrides Therapeutic Horsemanship, it's a beautiful thing. And with that, I turn to the county manager now.
Will not be part of my report. Beginning here in a couple of minutes, you will have a public hearing related to an application for telecommunications franchise. Wednesday, March 4th, tomorrow, at 10:00 in the morning, you will have a webinar where the State Department of Health will be providing information to elected officials related to the COVID-19 outbreak. 11:15 tomorrow, you will have the opportunity to welcome new, new county employees to Thurston County. And at 2:00 in the afternoon, you have a briefing related to vaping in public places, and that will be a Board of Health briefing. Thursday, March 5th, 9:00 in the morning, you have a briefing related to the salary commission. At 10:00 in the morning on March 5th, Thursday, you will have your regular Commissioners check-in, and an agenda to that meeting will be posted 24 hours in advance. At noon, the Department of Public Health and Social Services will provide a briefing to all the elected officials here in the county, as well as appointed directors, related to the COVID-19 outbreak. At 1:00 in the afternoon on Thursday, March 5th, you'll have your regular Superior Court update. And Thursday, on Thursday, March, March 5th, at 5:30 in the afternoon, you have been invited to participate on Thurston County League or Women's Waters March Water Forum. And that will, is going to be held in the Olympia Community Center, located at 222 Columbia Street, Northwest Olympia. On Friday, March 6th, you have a meeting with the Chehalis Drive Council, and this is going to be located in Fairfield Inn Suites, down in the Grand Mountain area, which is a 6223 197th Way Southwest Rochester. This is not a business meeting, this is a meet and greet meeting, and I believe, I believe as part of this meet and greet meeting, they will, the Chehalis Drive is going to give you a tour, give us a tour of their distillery and restaurant they're planning to open here in a couple of months in that area. Nothing on your combined schedule on Monday, March 9th, and on Tuesday, March 10th, you will come back here during your agenda setting, setting, 9:00 in the morning. 2:00 in the afternoon, you have your regular Board of County Commissioners meeting, and at 3:00 in the afternoon, you have your regular Board of Health meeting, which I believe the COVID-19 outbreak is going to be the key element of that. That is all I have for you.
All right. Thank you, sir. Do you have anything for the, for the order?
No, sir. I think we've got a hearing coming up.
So we're not going to adjourn, because we have a meeting coming up. Is there a set-up time that's needed?
No, just keep moving.
We're just going to keep on going and move right into the public hearing. This is a public hearing to consider accepting an application from the Zayo Group LLC for a non-exclusive franchise. The purpose is Thurston County is seeking public input on an application for a non-exclusive franchise application to operate in the county's right of way, or rights of way. There's a sign-up sheet in the back. If you wish to testify, just add your name, and I'll call you up to testify. Do we have anybody that's signed up?
I don't know that I can see, but let me just.
Then, oh, that's fine, I'm going to skip that piece, and I'm going to open up the public hearing. Sorry, I should be nailed down. He's bouncing. Is there no staff presentation?
I will.
Oh, there we go. Thank you, Robin.
Staff presentation, thank you, Commissioners. So this afternoon, we're here to talk about a franchise agreement, or the potential for one. The county contracts with providers of cable and telecommunications services who use our rights of way for their infrastructure, to be able to provide cable and, and phone service to the citizens of our county. Back in 1998, the county entered into an agreement with a company called Pacific Fiber Length to do just that, to construct infrastructure, specifically fiber-optic infrastructure in our rights of way. Over the last 22 years, the company has changed names and changed hands, and today is the Zayo Group LLC. And the group realized that the county did not have a current contract, so are currently going through the appropriate franchise agreement process. Part of that process is the public hearing this afternoon. I'm not aware of any written comment being received, and at the end of this hearing, I would recommend to the Board, based on information you receive, to take action to approve this franchise. And I'd be happy to try to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, Commissioner, any questions?
No, I don't have any questions. Thank you.
All right, I'm going to ask again if there's anybody from the public that would like to address the board or make comment on this. Anyone? Anyone? Nope, okay. Then, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I would move to close the public hearing.
And I second that? Any discussion on that?
No, sir.
This public, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. This public hearing is closed, and is there a motion?
There could be a motion, but I'm waiting for the county manager to.
That, that is an option for you, if you'd like to go ahead and introduce a motion, it's included on your script, on the script.
You have it? Right there. I'm sorry, you didn't have that.
At the bottom, you.
Got it.
Yeah.
I'm just kind of prolonging this, we'd be done with this hearing so quick, nobody will be able to believe it.
I thought you were saying how many big words were in there.
Okay. I would move to accept the application of the Zayo Group LLC for a non-exclusive franchise to construct, operate, and maintain a fiber-optic communication line and systems facilities within Thurston County rights of way.
Second that. Any further discussion?
No, sir.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. And there's no more business?
No, I think that concludes the business of the day.
And we are adjourned. Thank you for watching.